Start with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of science.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first order of business is to nominate a moderator. Do I have any nominations?
I'm going to nominate Pete Bass.
Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Pete, you're a moderator.
Thank you. Maureen, if you could read the legal notice for tonight's meeting?
Okay. Town of New Milford, Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford, Connecticut. Town of New Milford, Connecticut, warning, notice of special town meeting. The legal voters of the town of New Milford and those entitled to vote therein are hereby warned and notified to meet at Milford Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford, Connecticut, on Monday, April 9, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the E. Paul Martin Room for the following purposes to it: to consider and vote upon a resolution for planning, acquisition, and construction of road improvements from 2018 to 2019, and authorizing the issue of $6 million bonds to the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes as recommended by the Town Council and Board of Finance. Copies of the said resolution are in file and available for public inspection at the office of the Town of New Milford Town Clerk, dated at New Milford, Connecticut, this 26th day of March, 2018. Pete Bass, Mayor.
Thank you, Maureen. The return of the notice for this meeting is signed by the Town Clerk and states that the notice has been posted on the town signpost on March 27, 2018, and that a copy therefore has been published not less than five nor more than 15 days in advance of the meeting in the Greater New Milford Spectrum, a newspaper of general circulation in the town of New Milford, in its issue of the March 20th, 30th, 2018. In accordance with Section 7.8 of the General Statutes of Connecticut, as amended only by an elector of the town or a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more who jointly or severally was liable to the town for taxes assessed against him based on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of the town, or who would have been so liable, if not entitled, to an exemption as a blind person or as a veteran or as a parent or surviving spouse of a veteran would be entitled to vote at this meeting. So do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the town meeting?
We have some folks on the list.
Okay, you can read them off, please.
John Baker?
Mr. Baker?
Is that right, Baker? Oaks?
Mr. Oaks?
Close enough.
You've got to get the resolution on the phone first.
John Oaks, 297 Long Mountain Road. New Milford has underfunded its roads for the last 12 years. Here are the facts. Through the annual town budget request, the DPW has asked, on average, for $4 million a year for the last 12 years. The town has funded during that same period somewhere between $1.1 and $2 million a year. We all have seen the results. Our roads have steadily decreased in quality. In fact, last year, the town used an outside consultant to assess road condition. The findings of the consultant were that 19.9 miles, 11 percent, of our roads are in a critical state. Another 59.2 miles, or about 33 percent, are below average. This means that 44 percent of our roads are critical to poor and 103 miles, or 57 percent, are in acceptable or better condition. The funding that would be provided by this bond will start New Milford on a path towards fixing the damage that's been caused by underfunding in the past. We all experience the rough roads. We all see the potholes. Many of us have seen accidents where cars have left the road on particularly unsafe corners. All of this is both unacceptable and completely fixable. So I urge everybody present to vote for the bond.
I'm going to pass because Joe just said everything.
Okay. Peter Lutterer?
I'm in exactly the same position.
Thank you.
Kay Bogey?
Kay Bogey, Squire Hill, 65. Everything this gentleman said, however, I've seen lots of accidents. I think the roads need to be fixed. I don't think they need to be widened. They're country roads. They're a bit of a raceway as it is, even with the damage. People fly down the road. They hit all the potholes. It throws them off on the corners. I've almost been hit head-on by people creeping, coming down the left-hand side of the road when I'm trying to come up around the corner. It's just unsafe circumstances all the way around. I don't see how it's cost-effective for the town to come out three times a week to put a shovel full of tar in a hole. The amount of gas it takes the truck to get out there, three guys, you know, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me at all. And I really, there's no room for enforcement to gauge anybody, so widening it would just make things worse. So, and it would probably stay some way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hill?
Hi, I'm Jim Hill. I live on 93 Squires. I own 95 Squires next to it. The town's been dumping water on my property for 50 years. Maybe more than that, I don't know. I moved there in '51. And it's caused ruts, wrecked my driveway, messed it up, and now I see the new plan. They're not intending to change anything. They're still going to dump it on my property. It runs down my driveway's hump because the snow melts off it way before anywhere else because of the water underneath it. I get water in my foundation. This is on 95. And I'd just like to see it done because I'm going to have a battle with them if they don't. If they try to run it cheap and not connect it, it's got to go about 300 or 400 feet down the road, and then it goes down again. Now, they set a precedent on Woods End Road. They went there. There was a swale. The water went on. They put seven culverts. This is, I don't know, either 10 years ago. So what's good for one's good for another. I'm not taking that water anymore.
Phil Gallo?
My name is Phil Gallo. I live at 54 Squire Hill Road. I was at the meeting last year when we did a presentation to get Squire Hill Road paved. And we got a call, most of us did, that unequivocally, the road was going to start being repaired under construction this early spring. And last week, I saw two surveyors. They were digging up the markers that were put in two years ago to have the road repaired. So hopefully, we're going to get started with that, but nobody seems to have an answer as to whether or not we're going to get that road paved this year. The other thing I want to say is that I have a tendency to drive a little bit under the speed limit. And with all the potholes, I drive even slower than I normally would. And it's gotten to a point where people, especially at the bottom of Squire Hill Road, pass me on the other side of the road because I'm going too slow for them. I value my car. I value my front end, so I'm not about to go barreling down the road just because somebody behind me is in a hurry to get to wherever he's going. Three times this week, I've had people pass me on Bear Hill Road and Squire Hill Road. I don't know how they can go so fast, but they do. So the situation has gotten dangerous. It has to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Winter?
Good evening. Jeff Winter, 22 Maureen Road. Needless to say, as someone who has supported infrastructure spending and has noted how underfunded this town has been in terms of dealing with the roads for 20-plus years, I noted last year at, almost exactly a year ago, at the bonding meeting, that it was more likely that a child would be born in New Milford and die in New Milford than, and not have their road paved or reconstructed because the timetable was over 100 years. So I'm okay with the $6 million. My question is, you know, looking at the five-year capital plan, there's only scheduled for this year to be $4.7 million spent, and a million and a half of that is for highways. We're looking at Long Mountain Road, a third of it, and then two portions of Squire Hill. Those all need to be done. Where else is this money going to be spent? Last year, the Director of Public Works had a map. I was able to point out what roads were going to be worked on and fixed. I don't know if he can address that now?
Jeff, we'll have him come up after.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. And the other thing I'd like to know is, what kind of cost savings are we going to get after bond, for bonding this much? As opposed to the usual cost per mile of roads, is, are there going to be economies of scale through the $6 million? Because what I'm hoping for is that if we're going to put down this much money and get this much out there, that we're going to get additional bang for the buck. But I would like to hear that from the experts. Thank you.
Harold Hill, he's out in the hallway. Can somebody get him?
Good evening. Harold Hill, 66 North Road. I am, we do need to spend money to fix our roads. My reservation is that I don't want to see this money wasted. I feel Public Works needs some serious oversight because they have wasted an awful lot of money in the past years. Thank you.
Jeff McBride?
Jeff McBride, 288 Kent Road. I don't live on any of the bad roads that the people have talked about, okay, but I've driven all 183 miles of the roads in this town. And I find that 49 to probably 50 miles of the road, if you scale them the way that children are graded in school from A, B, C, D, and F, they all rate an F, okay? The two worst roads being Long Mountain Road, which is 3.9 miles, and Squire Hill Road is 1.1, and Borden River Road is 1 mile. There are other roads that are equally as bad. But if we're going to spend the money now that, over the last 10, 12, 14 years, wasn't allotted to keep your roads in the shape, we have to do it with the mindset that we have to get the best return for our investment. Because if we don't, then it's a waste of time. And there's $6 million, I believe, that we're looking at this year, if I'm right. And if you're going to do that, in order to get the roads back in shape and maintain them, we're going to have to do that for six or seven years in a row, okay? And the town and the New Milford residents are going to have to step up to the plate finally and bite part of the bullet so that we can get the roads back in the condition that they need to be in. And once they're in that condition, then they need to be maintained and be allotted the amount of money to maintain these roads every year. So I'm hoping that once this takes place and we get some money to do some of the roads, that we'll, nothing against the Department of Public Works, they do a good job, but they're not the professionals that do roads that will last for a long time. We need to have somebody do the roads so they're going to last, like I said, so we get the best return for our investment. Thank you.
Tom, it's all the most.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to the town meeting?
Hello?
Hello, sir?
My name is Rick Albozony, 147 Long Mountain Road. I live about 150 yards from the facility that has been expanded from the electric company. And part of the blame, this year in particular, at the end of last year, they have, I read somewhere, 60, 70 trucks a day traveling from a gravel pit north of where I live down to the facility itself, can gravel because they are redoing all the service roads and whatever. If the roads were bad, now they're awful. And I think we should put some of the blame on them. And I don't mean to blame, but I mean, come up with some money to pay for that because the roads are everybody's, not just theirs. And with this continuous traffic of heavy trucks coming up and down at full speed, especially when they're empty, traveling down the road, over and above being the possibility of accidents, serious accidents, they're destroying what's left of the road. And I see them every day. I mean, I work during the day and not home, but my neighbors that are there, they tell me that they were rolling in and out all day long. So that could be a consideration. I don't know how that works. But we pay taxes. We pay for electrical service. They should give something back to the town because of what they're causing.
Can you just sign this?
Is there anyone else that would like to address the town meeting? Mr. Lyley?
Ken Lyley, 14 Long Mountain. I wasn't expecting to come up here, but after this gentleman brought this up, I can only wholeheartedly agree with him. I live at the very top of Long Mountain. Not only do they go to the main facility, they're driving all the way up, the entire road. The road this year has gone from horrible to a word I don't say in public, okay? It's just, I drive my car through Gaylerville, up the dirt road to stay away from Long Mountain. This is just unacceptable. And we all worry about taxes and everything. And I look at what we get on Long Mountain. We don't get water. We don't get sewer. We get a cop up there once every six months, okay? We don't get much up there, but we're still responsible for seeing the mountains everybody else. And at this point, I'm just really fed up. Thank you. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Ann Lutharder. I live at 207 Long Mountain Road. 27 years ago, I put both of my daughters on the school bus, and the roads were horrible then. They were fixed by the town multiple times, and they really were never fixed well. Please fix the road. Spend the money the right way to have someone that knows how to fix the road so we're not going to be here in another couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to address the town meeting? It's Mr. Zarba here. Mike? You could kind of tell the town meeting what we're looking to do.
The current funding proposal for the $6 million, I think I prepared a packet for the mayor, Board of Finance, and the finance office. Current year, $4.7 million consists of Long Mountain Road number three, which is a section of Long Mountain Road, about 1.8 miles long, to reconstruct, and two sections of Squire Hill Road, the entire length of Squire Hill, I believe, on that, just over a mile, if I'm not mistaken, that needs to be also reconstructed. Those are two committed roads. They have been 95 percent designed at this, probably 98 percent designed at this point in time. We're looking to just finalize those bid packages over the next couple of weeks, put them out to bid for construction. We would like to, if all goes well, depending on how this meeting goes tonight, we would get started on those maybe later this year. In addition to that, we have one bridge project in this particular proposal that we're going to get started on design, should this money get approved as well. That's up on Tamarack Road, up near North Rush. There's two Tamaracks in town. This is the north end of town, up off of Mary Island North Road. Another phase of this particular bond package for current fiscal year, or current calendar year, I should say, current construction year, would be money that was pulled out of the operating capital funds to do milling and paving operations on a variety of roads. We have a list that we generate, and I think Mr. Oaks detailed that a little bit for you, through a evaluation service. We've whittled down the options, and I should say right now, because we've not sat down with mayor and decided exactly which ones of these roads would get done. But I'm going to read you the list of what we've whittled them down to. At this point, that would be eligible for the milling and paving process, the Cross Road, Runners Farm Road, Cedar Hill Road, Pumpkin Hill Road, a portion of Pumpkin Hill Road, Carmen Hill Road number two, Little Field Road, Hip Road, Carmen Hill Road number one. And there's several local roads that would also be eligible for those projects. I'm going to read you the list.
Mike, can you speak up?
There's a, there's several local roads that would also be eligible for that process. It's a little bit more lengthy. I'm going to read the list of that. We're going to whittle down the list with the mayor, I think, as the bond authorization says. What we're looking to do is coincide the local roads consistent with the collector roads that I just read you, so that we're in the same area. I think somebody mentioned, I believe it was Mr. Winter, about economies of scale. That's how we will reap economies of scale, by keeping contractors localized in the same vicinity working. We believe we can maximize the dollars spent. But that, the funds allocated to that portion of the project are about, I think it's about $400,000. So we will go as far as we can with that particular funds once we mark out these roads and allocate the funds to them, and we can get you a better list. We will keep the mayor's office posted, and we will keep everybody else posted via our Facebook page, and certainly our public website that we have available for you if you're interested in seeing the information there. So, any other points you want me to hit on?
Clarification. Could you, is that all right?
What's your name?
Marjorie Thelberg, 31 Heine Road. You said 1.8 miles of Long Mountain Road of the three-plus miles, or scheduled in the 4.3 or 7 of the $6 million that's...
So, as I understand, just to make, have everyone understand, the resolution tonight is to authorize the town to borrow up to $6 million, borrow $6 million for bonding for road financing. Our plan is the current fiscal year that we're in, and I should say the successive fiscal year, really, 2019 fiscal year, that we're going into, in discussions with our finance department, mayor's office, it's best to borrow what we can spend reasonably in that timeframe. So we're looking to borrow about $4.7 million during that year, and we would borrow the rest of the $1.3 million the following either spring or early into the next fiscal year of 2019, '20.
So just to follow on, can you clarify which 1.8 miles of Long Mountain is going to be fixed in the 4.7? And then my follow-on question is, I didn't hear the balance of Long Mountain Road in the list of roads to be addressed later on. So could you explain why that is?
Sure. One, it's a completely separate list, but the 1.8 miles of Long Mountain currently is from North Alley Road to Heine Road. That's being repaired with these, with these funds. The other section of Long Mountain is, is in a future capital year plan for us. If we continue, I don't remember, somebody had mentioned, you know, a successive year plan. You know, the idea is to continue borrowing or investing money in roads over the long term, not just one year, because one year, we're not going to fix every single road in town. So the idea would, Long Mountain is on that five-year capital plan. It's an eligible road. The remainder of Long Mountain Road, that you mentioned, from Heine Road to the north end, I believe it intersects with Indian Trail, if I'm not mistaken, were turned to gravel. So that section is eligible under the five-year capital plan. We need to fund that at another point in time in the future. So the other roads that I read was for a completely separate, different type of process. A milling and paving process is a bit different than a reconstruction-type process. It's roads we had allocated in our operating funds. Mayor, Town Council, and Board of Finance opted to bond that money rather than to basically put on the taxpayers back in the current fiscal year, the fiscal year that we're, that we'll be voting on shortly. So it spreads money out over a longer period of time, but it's an eligible capital fix on roads. You know, it's perfectly acceptable fix to make. It will certainly make the drivability and the safety of the roads substantially better than they are today on the eligible roads that I read you.
Excuse me, just to follow on those two things. First of all, something that really bothered me. Possibly this year, you said?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe this year. We were told last September that it was going to start as soon as construction season started. And my second part of that is, you just talked about economies of scale. You have the trucks on Long Mountain. Isn't it easier just to finish it as opposed to bringing them back three years from now? I'm sorry, those are my two questions.
Want to have a question-answer session? I'd be happy to do it. The economy is a scale. There's plenty of work to do on Long Mountain Road and the other roads, frankly, where we're going to reap the benefits of bidding and getting substantially lower prices, I would say, than doing quarter-mile stretches of road or skipping them all over town. So 1.8 miles is a substantial project to begin with. Certainly, to do more of Long Mountain while we're there saves, could save a little bit of mobilization costs, but in all reality, we can't spend all of our time on just one road in town, too. We have roads spread out throughout town.
Why not?
Well, I think we have 212 miles of road, and we also have... What's your idea of later on, if the last idea had been bold, every spring, that we're going to do Squire Hill Road? So you can see why I'm asking.
Certainly. This is the first year that, this is the first year that the funding package just came out.
Mike, what's your name?
You can speak to the elected officials about that, if you'd rather, about how the funding goes. I can only do the money that we're given. We haven't been given any money until, if we vote this package through, we'll do, we'll do the program that we set forth in our five-year capital plan that we've allocated to do. If money doesn't come forth in future years, we can't continue the process.
Sir, what's your name? Sir? Sir, what's your name?
Ed Maurice.
Beginning of my presentation, if the money's approved tonight, the two roads that we're ready to go with are Long Mountain and Squire Hill. We do need to put out a bid for them. You know, once we get the bid documents prepared, you know, we should have them prepared within the next few weeks. Once we get them prepared and put out the bid, we're going to make a decision as to how much, you know... how much, you know, what we can start this year and get done before the end of the construction season. So all of that has to do with the borrowings that are submitted, you know, this meeting only authorizes the town to borrow the money. It doesn't give us the money right now to spend. So we'll certainly deal with our finance department and the mayor's office, making sure that we get funds that we can allocate and spend as quickly as possible. We certainly would like to get done with some construction on those roads this year. I don't believe we'll finish all of them.
But we were told, we were told last September that it was going to start beginning of this construction season. So you're telling us we might be lucky to get a little bit done before the end of construction season?
Well, the beginning of the construction season is already passed, first of all.
All right, we understand that. We understand that.
So all I can do is go on the funds that we have allocated to us. And right now, we don't have the funds allocated to us without an approval of the town meeting. So I don't know how better to answer your question. Until the money's approved for us to borrow, we can't go get the money to actually start the construction.
Is the nature of the work that you plan to do on the construction of the road such that the seating of road ordinance is involved in terms of the changes that are to be made?
What's your name, sir?
Peter Lyler.
We have read, we understand the seating of road ordinance. We've gone through that process with our design team. We've certainly gone through that understanding with town council as well. I don't, there may be other processes beyond what we're doing that may need to be looked at on Long Mountain Road. That's not something we've done at this point in time, if in fact, somebody feels that needs to be done.
May I respectfully suggest that we take a look at now in case sometimes delay is there, so you could get that behind you by the time you add...
So one of the things we are going to be addressing, as we all know, the roads are not in good shape. So this is the beginning of our process of fixing our roads. If this town meeting decides that we are going to move forward with a $6 million road improvement, then, as Mike had said, we're going to sit down, we're going to review everything, and we're going to do the best we can with the money that we have. Before we do that, we are going to have another meeting of which we can update our residents, because it's your money. So we can let you know what we've been able to do with the funding source that you, the taxpayer, allow us to have. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with us, at this town meeting? So I'd like to read the resolution. I would like to introduce a $6 million road improvement resolution on the call for consideration tonight. This resolution is appropriating $6 million for the planning, acquisition, and construction of road improvements in the years 2018 and 2019, and authorizing the issuance of $6 million of bonds for the town to meet set appropriation and pending the issuance, therefore, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. There's a copy here for the road improvements resolution. It's available, if you'd like this, it will also be available on our town site, if you so choose. If you'd like one, Mr. Winters?
I read the...
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to waive the full reading of the resolution, but incorporating the full text into the minutes of this meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please raise your hand. Yep. Now, we're going to say, we're going to make a motion for the adoption of the road improvement resolution.
So move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Any discussion? By a vote, by a voice vote and a show of hands? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we just get a count of everybody here, so we know how many people?
If you could count off the number once, sir.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
Eight.
Nine.
Ten.
Eleven.
Twelve.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine.
Thirty-one.
Forty-two.
Forty-three.
Forty-four.
Forty-five.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-seven.
Forty-nine.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-five.
I think we've got to start in the front row now.
Plus 45, 91, 45.
But the last one, did they count as well?
No.
66.
Thank you, sir.
67.
68.
69.
70.
71.
72.
73.
74.
78.
79.
80.
81.
82.
83.
84.
85.
86.
87.
88.
89.
90.
91.
92.
93.
94.
95.
96.
97.
98.
99.
101.
102.
103.
104.
105.
106.
107.
108.
108.
109.
60.
61. 62. 63. 64. 65.
I think we've got to start in the front row now. Plus 45, 91, 45.
But the last one, did they count as well?
No.
66.
Thank you, sir.
67.
68.
69.
70.
71.
72.
73.
74.
75.
76.
So please, please note, please note the vote? Do we have anything else that would like to come before this town meeting?
Um, yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name is Rick Harrison. I live at 20 deep with Wayne, which is approximately 190-ish, 190 to deep, you know, Long Mountain Road. Yes, my wife is a victim of Long Mountain Road. She has a compound fracture, a scar on her left forearm from a head-on accident. I'm walking on it. It was our first year living there, back in the 90s or so, and it's still the same. But I think we have to also not, the roads are bad. We've got to go a little farther than the roads. My next vision is one of those leaning trees, or one that the woodpecker's almost done chopping, falling on us. We've got to go a little bit outside the box. We've got to go a little farther. I don't know who's in charge or who's, just travel that road. There's got to be between that, what you're talking about, that stretch. I bet you there's 10 trees that are hallowed out from woodpeckers that are going to fall on us, guaranteed. It's going to be us, it's going to be your workers, it's going to be somebody. It's got to go a little farther and take a look at what's really hanging and what's there.
I will contact the tree warden, and we'll have him come up there.
The whole thing is that.
Yes, sir.
And like what this other gentleman said, and this gentleman knows the stats of everything, and ONG and NeverSource has really depth added to it. I know it's development, and it's also, they supply power to us, so it kind of like goes hand-in-hand. Construction and work and all that stuff, all goes hand-in-hand, but there's got to be ways around it, there's got to be sincerity, and there's got to be some considerate situations that have to be taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you to the public for allowing us and entrusting us with the opportunity to start our road projects with this funding. So I just want to thank you very much. Thank you for everyone coming tonight and attending, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.